And this is right through the last. So I told Sean, I said, I'll call Frig there. You know, we'll be. I called. And the lady said, uh. You took delivery the first week of January last year. And I said, yes, ma'am. And she said, I'm sorry, but your warranty is expired. I called like three or four days late. No. Good, that's what we wanted. Who wants to lead the pledge this morning? You will, alright, go on. Okay, we're almost there, folks. Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to the August twenty-second meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Dennison. Glad all of you are here with us today. We've got a fairly good crowd today. Well, not really, because Phyllis is staff, so she's not going to count as far as tenants. Anyway, um. It's our tradition that we will begin our meeting with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If you would like to participate and join us, we'd ask that you would, please stand with us at this time. Father, we come to you again grateful for another opportunity to be here together to, uh, resolve the business of our city. We thank you for the blessings of the place that we live. We ask that you would be with us during this meeting, with each one involved, and we give you thanks and praise in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a little housekeeping this morning. Uh, the planning commission is a recommending body. And with the exception of site plans and plaits, which our decision on those cases will be final, all other cases will be sent to city council for final approval. And they will be on the meeting of Ms. York.
September fifth, but we do not have any going.
Okay, so we will add the plaits today.
That's correct.
So we won't have to go there. Um, I think the plaits are public hearings, so if you would like to speak on behalf of one of these requests today, uh, ask that you come to the lectern and please give us your name and address for the record. And, uh, we have a three-minute time limit, which we probably won't have to worry about that today. And, uh, that being said, we are going to move into item three, our consent agenda. Uh, which will be approving the minutes from our August eighth meeting. Are there any errors or omissions that need to be addressed?
I wasn't here.
Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mister Chair, I'm with approval of the minutes of the August eighth meeting.
Have a motion. Need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Alright, we're going to move on to, uh, our public hearings. Ms. York.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Item five A, receive.
Sorry, I get on to y'all all the time about turning your mics on, and I didn't even have mine on, so forgive me. Item five A, receiver report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of the nail addition, being a replat of lot two R of group five joint venture one addition, creating a lot two A dash R and two B dash R. Case number twenty-two-three dash zero-seven-eight RP. This is an aerial view of the subject location. Um, it is located off of Bell Avenue, and that is the Katy Trail, um, to the east. The property is currently zoned, uh, single-family seven-point-five. And this is the proposed plat. Um, it's kind of hard to see on here, but lot, uh, two A dash R is, uh, fronts on Bell Avenue. And this lot, uh, this, uh. Well, it is a single lot at the moment. It was platted into one lot with, uh, the house being a portion of that lot. The applicant is requesting, um, this replat in order to, um, section off the house, uh, and leave the six-point. Eight, or six-point acres, um, for future development. To the south is Highland Park Drive. Um, the lot, the second lot that's proposed fronts on that street, however, it is unimproved at the moment. Um, there are several other applications that will have to come before staff, including a preliminary plat, final plat, civil engineering plans, uh, prior to that, uh, larger tract of land being developed. Um, and in order for the applicant to sell the property, he has to plat the property. So, um, staff feels comfortable moving forward, allowing that, uh, larger tract of land to be platted, um, against that unimproved road, as it'll have to be constructed and platted in the future for development. With that being said, both lots do technically still meet the, um, development requirements of the single-family seven-point-five residential zoning district. Um, and as I stated, there will be several other applications that will have to come forward for the future development of lot two B dash R. So staff feels comfortable with the plat as presented and recommends approval. I'm present for any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
I just, I've walked that trail, and I know that there's quite a bill of hill on that side, isn't there?
I actually haven't walked that portion of the trail.
It's, it's, uh, I can't, I can't remember because I've done the whole thing, but, um, I. I think that the truss was in there somewhere. And that may be actually south of Highland Park.
It, it may be, I'm not familiar with that. Those are definitely things that can be brought up.
Yeah, there're going to be a number of.
Yeah, we can, whenever, um.
Want to take a look.
Yes, ma'am.
It just, in general, I know that there are, uh, you can, some of it, you can see the houses from the trail. And it could be that it's north of there, where I'm thinking that the hills might be prohibitive. So it, it may not involve that.
Sure.
Just information.
Well, I appreciate it. It will, uh, definitely take into account, um, the Katy Trail whenever that future development comes in.
Because there's actually some, some serious issues on the trail itself in terms of, uh, separation. That, I don't know what was underneath there, but that's going to create a problem too.
I'm sure that that'll be mitigated through the, yeah.
I'm just thinking access to that property, I imagine they would want to have north access and southern access.
It's possible there, uh, for that lot. So, um, if you can kind of see on the north side, there's High Meadow Drive, uh, that's also unimproved. So Bell, Bell Avenue, actually, along with all those other, uh, streets to the west of Bell Avenue, they all dead end to an unimproved High Meadow Drive. Um, so it is possible that whenever, um, this parcel is developed, that the future developer will want to have dual access, not just off of. He may, it depends on that dead-end length.
He'll have to have two access points. I, I don't think fire department would approve it without it.
It, it just depends on how long that dead-end cul-de-sac is. I think it, I don't think it exceeds the six hundred feet that's required by ordinance, but it could. And if it is, then at that point, High Meadow Drive would become, um, improved, which would benefit the whole neighborhood. But that'll be something that we, we discuss whenever, um, the future developer comes through for a preliminary plat. They'll most likely have to come through for a pre-application meeting first, and then we can talk out all those details with the future developer at that time.
Yeah, access will probably be an issue to it because the property just to the north of it, we had taken several years ago. Uh, and that was the problem with that piece of property.
Yeah.
Couldn't access it except from Bell Avenue.
Yeah.
So we have an issue with that. Any other questions of staff? So anyone here to speak on behalf of this request? Sir. Can you come? If you don't have anything to say, you don't have to come up here.
No questions?
Alright, thanks. Um, okay. I'll close the public hearing, uh, entertain a motion.
I move to. Go ahead. I move to approve the proposed replat. I'll second.
Okay, have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright. Item five B.
Item five B, receiver report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots two R, three R, and four R of the Niva Lane subdivision, case number twenty-two-three dash zero-six-nine RP. This is an aerial view of that subject property. Um, this is very north Dennison, this is in the ETJ. Um, that is Lake Texoma, that's right there. This is the proposed plat. Purpose of the plat is to sell off portions of the property. All lots have frontage on Niva Lane, and they will all have access to, uh, water via Thompson Heights Water Company. Uh, staff recommends approval of the proposed replat, and I'm present for any questions you may have.
I have a question. I assume that is in Dennison ISD School District?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions of staff? Anyone here to speak on behalf of this request? Alright, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve of the proposed replat.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome. Moving right along. Staff updates.
Yes, sir, before we get to, um, the item listed, I just want to update the commission. Um, last night at the planning, or at the city council meeting, uh, the plan development that came before, uh, the commission a couple of Tuesdays ago was approved, um, with the recommendation of the eight split for the materials of the eighty-twenty, uh, so eighty percent masonry, twenty percent metal. Um, the city council did ask for, uh, a little bit more of a strict percentage when it comes to landscaping, so instead of eight percent, they're doing twelve percent. Um, but other than that, it passed.
Sure.
Okay, so item six A, work session, receiver report, hold a discussion, and provide direction on a proposed amendments to the landscaping requirements contained in section twenty-eight-point-five-one of the zoning ordinance.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, I'm Phyllis Sherrill, and the city has asked me to work with staff to update the city's landscaping requirements. And this is in response to all the new development that you're, uh, getting now, both commercial and residential. Also, uh, to, uh, bring the requirements into alignment with those of other regional cities. Uh, promote the use of drought-tolerant native species, uh, to also promote water conservation, and also address erosion control problems that are occurring on single-family lots. So today, I'm going to go briefly through the major changes that we're proposing, uh, talk about some issues for consideration, and I want to get your feedback today, uh, of any changes, or questions that you might have, things that you would like to see different. Or if it's in good shape, then we'll move on to a public hearing on September twelfth for you to formally consider, uh, the amendments. There's some general requirements that we're proposing that would apply to, uh, all development, and that would be that automatic irrigation systems are required, except on single-family lots and in natural areas that are going to be preserved. To improve their survival rate and lessen water needs, we are allowing only native and adaptive trees and shrubs to be planted as required plantings. And we are updating the tree and shrub list, uh, that are in the current ordinance, uh, to really focus on these native and adaptive species. For required trees, uh, to prevent loss from a disease that might come in and wipe out everything, we are, uh, requiring that no more than thirty percent of required trees on a development be of the same species, trying to get a mix, uh, to make it more disease-resistant. We're proposing to increase the minimum caliper size of the required trees from two inches to three inches, and then for the required shrubs from three gallons to five gallons, and these are pretty standard sizes if you look around, uh, what other cities are requiring i- in the region. And then finally, uh, another general require, oh, I covered that already about the shrubs. To go into the requirements for non-residential and multifamily development, uh, the current ordinance requires eight percent of the property to be landscaped, but there's not a defined landscaped edge. There's not a lot of direction about the placement of the landscaping, uh, on the property. So we're trying to be more deliberate in terms of where landscaping and trees are located. So the revised landscape requirements, uh, would apply to non-residential uses as well as churches, schools, and other institutional uses that might be located in residential zoning districts. We're proposing a minimum ten-foot-wide landscape strip along streets, and this is, uh, this is different for the US seventy-five corridor, and I'll, I'll cover that, uh, later. Trees have to be planted at thirty feet on center, but they can be clustered within the landscape strip because you're going to run into obstacles where you can't, a- and maybe you don't want them just regimented every thirty feet. Uh, so to get a more natural, uh, look than, uh, the ordinance would allow you to cluster trees.
Thirty-foot centers?
Thirty-foot on center, yes, sir. Um, headlight screen would be required, uh, for parking spaces that are adjacent to the landscape strip, that this is carried over from your current ordinance. Um, within the landscape strip, you could use turf, evergreen ground cover, planting beds or mulch, gravel and rock, only under trees and shrubs where turf is unlikely to grow. However, uh, the director of development services could modify that requirement if the developer's proposing a, uh, Texas smart scape, low-water type of landscaping, uh, that would use more native plants and, and more rock and gravel. Where overhead power lines and utility easements conflict with the landscaping, we're proposing some alternative placement of trees and, and landscaping, uh, to address that, because this is frequent, uh, as you probably know, uh, in terms of conflicts along the rights of way. You've usually got water and sewer and, uh, private utilities and overhead electric lines and all these things that, that might interfere with the landscape strip. Now, in downtown Plano, uh, the central area district would be exempt, uh, except we are proposing that if you have a surface parking lot that's twenty spaces or larger in size, then you would have to do a five-foot landscaped edge around it just for shrubs. But otherwise, in the core of downtown, uh, these requirements would not apply, and that's appropriate, uh, for the more urban style of development that's in downtown Dennison. For parking lots, we're, uh, proposing that eight square feet of landscaping, uh, area per parking space, uh, be added. Uh, this would be in addition to the required landscape strips, and your, your current ordinance allows, uh, all of this to be considered as part of the eight percent. And again, we are trying to be more deliberate in the placement of, of landscaping, uh, for your new developments. One tree is required for every fifteen parking spaces. The current requirement's one tree for every fifty parking spaces. And then landscaped islands would be required, uh, with one tree, uh, required at the end of each row of parking, and at a rate of one island for every fifteen spaces. So if, if you had, uh, you know, thirty-five spaces in a row, uh, then you're going to need one space for, at, at each end, and you'll need another island in the middle. For single-family residential lots, we're, uh, proposing one shade tree per lot if the front yard is twenty feet or more in depth, and less than a hundred feet in width. Ornamental trees may be used in lieu of shade trees if the front yard's less than twenty feet. For lots wider than a hundred feet, we're proposing, uh, that two shade trees, uh, be planted. And if they're existing trees in the front yard, uh, they may be used to meet the tree requirement. And, and this ordinance does work in tandem with your newly adopted tree preservation ordinance. So i- if a developer's proposing, is, is preserving trees, then they will get a credit on having to install new trees. So the, the ordinances are, are proposed, you know, they should work together. There is a provision in state law, uh, that delays, uh, imposition of new landscaping requirements for two years after the property is platted. Uh, this will impact the shade tree requirement if subdivision lots were recently platted. Now, I know a lot of your infill housing is occurring on lots that were platted decades ago in, in some, uh, you know, some options, but, uh, there is, we are trying to be mindful of the state law provision and comply with that. To prevent erosion, uh, for single-family lots, which I understand has been a problem, uh, with some recent development, uh, we, we are proposing that the front side and rear yards of new single-family detached townhouses and duplex lots be sodded prior to the final inspection for the house.
Okay, let's, let's stop right there for a second. Because there is some confusion.
Okay.
Up until just recently, um, what building inspections was requiring of us was the front and the sides had to be completely sodded, okay? Even the parkway, which is the right way. But on the backside of the house, we were only required to go back ten to fifteen feet back behind the house, and they didn't require it for the remainder of the lot, because on these infill lots, it's a hundred and fifty foot depth on most of those. So you're, you're, on these smaller houses that sodden that much yard, got to be a, a real financial burden, you know, as far as the. Keeping costs down. So are, are we going to require that the entire lot be sodded? Is that what the new requirement's going to be?
That, that's the proposed requirement, yes, sir.
Okay.
Sodded or appropriate other land, ground cover, correct?
You, you could use evergreen ground cover, uh, you could use planting beds, uh, you know, things like that to also, uh, essentially trying to prevent the soil from running off, uh, when it rains, because, uh, you know, a, a lot of homeowners will go ahead and, and hydromulch or sod those areas, some won't. But, and it, I understand it has been a problem in the city. I'll move on to the overlay districts, and these are areas where it's kind of been a challenge to think about landscaping because of the current development in these older commercial, uh, corridors. Uh, but for Morton Street, we're proposing the same ten-foot-wide landscape strip, but the planning director, director of development services, may approve a reduction to five feet with only shrubs to accommodate parking and building placement. It really needs some flexibility in these areas, uh, to accommodate e- existing conditions on site. You have properties where the driveway, you know, essentially the whole front of the lot's a driveway, and you pull right in off the street. Uh, you have others where, uh, there really is no room on, on the site to do landscaping. So really trying to build in some flexibility so that we're not sending everyone to the board of adjustment every time they come in with a, a proposal. That same, uh, proposal would apply in Austin Avenue. The ten-foot landscape strip would be required south of US sixty-nine intersection and between Walker Street and the US sixty-nine and seventy-five intersection. That leaves out, you know, the, the, kind of the core area of downtown, which would be exempt, but we also have areas where it would be very difficult to implement a ten-foot landscaped edge. And so the same flexibility would be built into the ordinance, uh, to allow staff to make that determination, uh, to be flexible on the width and the plantings, uh, in, in the landscape strip. Now, for US seventy-five in the highway-oriented corridor, uh, we are proposing a minimum thirty-foot-wide landscaped edge along the frontage roads, uh, and one shade tree and one ornamental tree would be required at thirty feet on center within those landscaped edges. And along the intersecting streets, the landscape strip would be reduced to fifteen feet, uh, and again, requiring shade trees and ornamental trees. The US seventy-five corridor is, is one where I think th- there's a lot of undeveloped land there, and it, it's this, these changes, I think, would start to standardize, uh, your streetscape along the, that corridor, uh, to im- to kind of highlight that this is a special corridor within the city. Uh, and really to improve the appearance, uh, as, uh, development continues to occur in, in that corridor. Thirty feet is pretty standard, uh, in, uh, area cities in terms of what they require along major corridors. So I don't think we're propos, this proposal isn't out of step with what other cities are requiring along freeways and expressways.
Can the trees be clustered in that thirty-foot buffer?
Yes. Yes. I know signage is always a concern with every, uh, commercial, uh, developer, uh, so there needs to be some flexibility to address that. But on the other hand, we, I think we want something other than crepe myrtles, where they would come in and top them off every, you know, every winter. But, so that, that's a proposal, you know, for that major corridor. I've listed some issues, uh, for consideration, that these are things that have come up as, as staff, I've worked through these issues with staff, and also what we heard from the builders and developers when we met with them in early August. I took one of your recent site plans and kind of compared what was required for landscaping with these new requirements, and the total square footage of landscaping is very similar, but the number of trees was increased substantially on, under the proposed, uh, requirements. Uh, and again, trying to be more deliberate in where landscaping occurs and, and the placement of trees. In the Austin Avenue and Morton Street overlay districts, uh, there's some other things I think the city could consider to improve, uh, the streetscape in those corridors. Uh, one would be to work with TechStot, uh, to do some enhanced landscaping, those really wide, uh, parkways and rights of way that you have. Uh, so there may be some programs and, and potentially even funding through TechStot to do some things like that. The city could also consider easements, uh, on strategic properties if you wanted to create like a gateway, uh, and emphasize, you know, that you're coming into downtown, uh, you know, or Morton Street. Uh, you could work with individual property owners for the city to acquire an easement from those property owners, and then install and maintain enhanced landscaping. And then finally, I think the city could consider creating like a gateway improvement fund, where if a developer were not able to provide landscaping on their property, they could contribute, uh, to this fund that the city would then use, uh, you know, to, to, uh, landscape, uh, areas. So just some things to consider that would be alternatives, uh, knowing the challenges, I think, that you'll have in, in implementing landscape strips in these older commercial corridors. And then finally, as I mentioned, we did meet with, uh, some builders and developers that are working in the city, uh, back in early August, and just wanted to kind of review some of the concerns, uh, that they raised about the proposed amendments. Uh, one was the measurement of new trees. I had proposed in there to change that from caliper inches at, uh, twelve inches above the soil to diameter at breast height. Uh, they were concerned about that because that would increase the size of a new tree that would have to be planted. So I went back and did some research, and my recommendation is leave it as is, uh, in the current ordinance. Uh, the caliper inches would still be measured at twelve inches above the soil, and I think that's pretty standard for new tree plantings. Develop, uh, diameter at breast height, you've probably heard that in the tree preservation ordinance. The tree requirement for new homes was also a concern, uh, for some of the, uh, builders because of, you've got a driveway, you've got water lines, you've got utility lines, and, and how a tree might interfere with those, and, and, uh, they were also concerned about, uh, it, uh, avoiding builder warranties on, on certain things like foundations. You know, I, I think, uh, the one tree per lot is pretty standard requirement in the area. I think builders, you know, there, there are choices in trees, uh, that could make a difference in terms of roots, uh, and how they would spread and potentially impact, uh, you know, foundations and parking, uh, you know, pavement. Um, also, uh, there is a provision to allow, uh, ornamental trees to be planted instead of shade trees, and, um, we are recognizing then in, in a smaller yard, you really don't have room for a shade tree. So I think hopefully this, these will, options will mitigate the concerns of the builders, uh, in that, uh, instance.
Do you know if there's going to, how many taproot trees will be on the approved list?
I don't know. I ha- I have the list, but I'm not a landscape architect, so I, I wouldn't, I'm not the best person to ask about taproots.
Because in those kind of tight spaces, that's.
Yeah.
You know, if we could plant a taproot tree there, then, then, you know, pecan tree, for example.
That's something.
We don't have to worry about root systems.
Yeah.
Like we do on oaks or whatever.
I will, uh, do some research on that.
There's another issue that I've seen the reality of, and that is that in. There's another issue that I've seen the reality of, and that is that in, in our area, we have some areas where trees, the trees just don't want to grow, and they, they get planted, they fail, and it's an over and over again process. I don't know what happens with that or what the guarantee from the developer would be on something like that, but there's, uh, I can imagine a number of issues where they go in, they do everything they're supposed to do, and then they've got almost a hundred percent failure rate. What, what would be the avenue to work with that?
You know, most, uh, new plant materials come with a warranty. Usually, I think it's about a year, um, you know, that, uh, it would be replaced, uh, by the nursery or, or the provider. Um, you know, it, I think requiring automatic irrigation systems will help with that, uh, and then, you know, ultimately, there's enforcement through code enforcement and through the ordinance on not maintaining, uh, landscaping and living and growing condition. But I don't know if there's something specific that's causing the die-offs. Is it, you know, soil or, you know, things like that?
There's some sandy soil that we run into, and, and I know that we tried to replace a tree, and the, we got a nice little Japanese oriental, you know, it was just gonna be an ornamental tree, and it failed. And so, uh, part of it is if you plant it yourself, there's, there's no warranty guarantee or anything, you, you're responsible. And that seems to be the direction that a lot of the, uh, tree people are going towards. I don't know in the big developments, what kind of, but that would be the question is, what kind of working relationship do they have with the people putting the trees in so that if that happens, is that the responsibility of the developer or the landscaper? And the landscapers, some of them are just not wanting to guarantee.
Well, you really can't, you can't expect them to warranty something when...
There's other variables, the watering and everything.
That's it. I don't know if there's been proper watering, I don't know if they've taken care of it, so you're asking me to warranty something for a year that I re- I mean, I'm not gonna go over there and make sure that the tree gets watered, I got other things to do, and when I sign off on a piece of property that don't belong to me anymore, you know? And I know that there was, uh, I think there was a comment made in, in discussions that, well, the builders have it in, in their budget that if the tree dies within twelve months, they can go plant a new one. Well, you know, we used, we gotta look at what the fruit tree list is, um, you know, so if you've got a, a oak tree of a certain caliber size, that's not a cheap tree to plant, you know? It's not like going to get in a crepe myrtle and flopping it in there. So I think we have to, we gotta look at that as, as far as making the developer be responsible for, for something after he has delivered the property. The tree was healthy, the tree was doing well, the landscape was doing well, you know? What's to say that the owner don't go in there and go, you know what, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna do this, I'm not gonna have that flipping irrigation system going, I'm gonna go shut that thing off, you know? It's raining now, I don't need it, or whatever. So I, I mean, we can't be, I don't see how we could hold the developer responsible for something that's outside his, his scope of, of enforcement.
And, you know, I, I guess I look at single-family lots a little differently, because, you know, once the homeowner buys it, uh, even, you know, your tree preservation requirements don't apply. So if, if they didn't want that three-inch caliber stick in their yard, you know, they could take it out.
Take it out?
Yeah. I think for commercial developers, uh, that's, it's a bit different, uh, you know, where, uh, there is, uh, some motivation to keep, uh, you know, your landscaping looking nice and, and, you know, good condition. So I kind of set, try to separate those, you know?
Yeah.
Because traditionally, once you buy your home, you're, you're king of your castle, so, uh, you know, you don't want to run your irrigation if, if you have one, because we're not requiring irrigation systems for single-family homes. Uh, then you, you want to turn it all off and let everything die, that's, that's kind of your, your freedom as, as a homeowner.
Another question I had, going back to the residential requirements, is sod and tree, is that all we're gonna require? Or is there gonna be a certain percentage of shrubbery landscaping required on front elevations, or, or is that a part of, of the new ordinance?
The proposal is only for sod and trees. Now, once you get to a less than twenty-foot front yard setback, uh, let's say you've got a five-foot yard for a townhouse, uh, then we would only require shrubs in the front yard.
Now, let's, let's take our ordinance the way it's written. If we do a seven-foot deep, ten-foot wide minimum porch, we can take that to fifteen feet. So does that impact the landscape ordinance if, if the porch goes on the front of the, on the front of the house and exceeds beyond, into that?
The proposal is it's set to the, uh, building, front building setback is what's required in, in that zoning district. So your porch might extend into that front yard setback, and I recall there is some provision for that. Um, but if you had a fifteen-foot front yard setback, then you would only be required to do an ornamental tree.
Okay. Okay. Are there any changes gonna be made in parking requirements for residential? Are we still gonna?
No, those are remaining.
Okay, so we've got a, a, a minimum of, of two, two spaces required, correct?
Four, single-family, five, yes. So a one-car covered and then a one car in the driveway.
Okay, okay. And, and then on the SF seven, it's gonna be?
Two-car garage and two, two spaces in the drive.
Okay. Cause in Sherman, you're required to have one parking place for each sleeping room, you know?
Yeah.
So what you wind up with on an infill lot is, uh, a driveway that's about thirty-foot wide on a fifty-foot lot. So where do you put that tree? I mean, and we just ran into it over there, we wound up putting it in the backyard, you know, that was our place, we had to put one, so that's where they wound up going. But, um, if we don't change those ordinances, we shouldn't have a problem with being able to have space for a tree in the front.
We haven't had, I mean, those changes came in November, if I'm recalling correctly, so at this point, we're not even looking at that again. Um, we have other things that we have to make a priority.
Well...
Unless we get that direction, then we'll look at it.
Let's hope that don't happen. I don't know that I'm not, uh, in favor of, well, this is gonna get me in some hot water when I say this. Um, I don't care how well the house is designed, and landscaping in how, it enhances a property significantly, in my opinion, whether it's residential or commercial. Uh, a minimal amount of, um, perimeter of the, of the structure, uh, landscaping in the front, especially on a narrow-lot house, is not that expensive. Um, but it, to me, it, it, it kind of looks incomplete when I look at the house and I see the grass go right up to the slab. Now, you go to England and that's the way they do them, but we're talking, you know, homes the size of this building that are, you know, you know, and they have gardens that are set away from the house. But just when the grass just goes up to the, it just looks incomplete to me. So I'm not so sure that we shouldn't maybe look at some sort of a perimeter landscaping, it doesn't have to be a, you know, anything major, just something that we could get color or, you know, small, small landscaping requirements that would be around the, the front elevation of the, of the house. Doesn't have to be on the sides or the rear, it just needs to be something to enhance the front. I mean, that's, uh, I'll catch, I'll catch the flak from the builders over there.
I don't think you will, because I mentioned that in the builders' and developers' meeting, that I don't want to see, um, cinder blocks or the foundation, right? Um, and so I also felt the same way saying that, but I think it needs to be called out that, to your point, it doesn't look complete and we want to send a different message, right?
Yeah. It's, 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 um, I think, on the, on these little infill lots, we were spending maybe even having it installed, having somebody else come out there and plant it. We might've been spending six, seven hundred dollars on, on just front landscaping, you know? Now, again, uh, we have a lot of, of investment properties in Dennison, and those people don't water and take care of it, so it'll, it'll die. Uh, and I would certainly not require them to use a five-gallon plant, we could, we could back off of that, you know, for the residential stuff, uh, maybe a little bit to soften the expense of it. But, um, for owner-occupied stuff, I mean, it, to me, it's, it's not an expense that's, we should go and think about doing it.
There are cities that require foundation plantings, uh, for single-family homes, and I think that's, you know, a row of shrubs in the front, um, you know, uh, so that is something we could add to the ordinance.
Right. It, it's just not a major expense, but it makes a major difference, in my opinion, as to the way that the development looks, and, you know, especially on, on new developments. Of course, I think a lot of the deep restrictions now will require landscaping, so that's, you know?
So when we talk about redevelopment, is that, does that include infill?
Yes.
Any other questions, Phyllis?
I had a question on the requirement, uh, for parking lots, where it says eight square feet of landscape area, what is it currently?
Currently, um, there's no requirement for, for parking space, I'm looking at Diane to confirm, uh, it's all part of that eight percent of the overall property that has to be landscaped.
Okay. And then the one tree required for every fifteen parking spaces versus the current one tree for fifty, where did the fif- fifteen number, that seems like a substantial increase?
Yes, sir, it is, uh, and as I said earlier, it does substantially increase the number of trees that would have to be planted on a commercial, uh, development. Fifteen's pretty common of what you see from other cities, doesn't have to be fifteen, if you think that's too excessive, you know, certainly that, that could, could change. I think one to fifty might be a little bit...
Yeah, that's almost not...
Too few trees, but, uh...
Yeah, I looked in cities for sure, it was one to ten.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, you know?
Also, what has to be considered in this future parking lot is that clearly parking lots are going to have to be restripped, so virtually every parking lot that exists will accommodate fewer cars because we're gonna have to have restripes. Ditto for the future. And I'm wondering how we're factoring in what those numbers, right, might reflect, and in fact, if we might look at requiring that there be at least some parking places that will accommodate BMS vehicles. And we, and they aren't, and they're shoved into compact marked car spaces, and it is something that has to be addressed, both for parking that exists and parking that's coming. And as you know, Phyllis, it's, it's not only here that it needs to be addressed, it needs to be addressed wherever there are automobiles, but it is something about which we should be not only forethinking, but planning now. So that, again, affects the number of trees theoretically, if you're not just talking about footprint, correct?
If I may. Um, so for redevelopment, as well as for new development, they still have to meet a parking requirement. So, um, our ordinance calls out, um, specific uses and the number of parking that is required, um, or blankets, a commercial use, and it's one per two hundred square feet of the building, I believe. So there are parking requirements that have to be met in addition to the landscape ordinance.
I understand that that's not exactly the concern that I'm addressing.
Okay.
And I know that in order to create sufficient parking places, the, some folks make more compact ones, which in fact achieves one purpose, i.e. number of parking spaces, does not achieve the second purpose of how they must be in variety of size. And if it's only the number, then we are gonna be hampered by allocation.
Yeah, but it's not. That, that compact number is based on a proportionate number of spaces, so you can't go in there and say, alright, I've gotta have, I've gotta have thirty spaces, so I'm, I'm restricting on space, so I'm gonna make half of them compact and half of them full-size, all of them. You can't do that. Our numbers are based on such that you can only have, if there's a total of twenty spaces, then we have a maximum percentage that can be compact.
I understand.
And the size of the parking spaces is within the standard details for construction, so they all have to accommodate a certain size, and that's set by public work. So that's within their standards, so we can't, uh, that can't happen, is what I'm trying to say. It's not supposed to happen, so, um, if we find that that's the situation, then we would have to mitigate that.
Yeah, I don't even, I don't, when I'm doing a site plan, I don't even put compact space in, I don't even do them, because you're exactly right. Uh, somebody's gonna sit a compact space close to the, to the front and they'll park their F-150 extended cabin.
And it compromises three quarters of one's.
And, and so I don't even do them, but, but there shouldn't be a real issue with whether the proportion of what you're allowed versus, I mean, I think where you're coming from is we're looking at a nine-by-eighteen minimum space, okay? Which, to me, um, and I think we're seeing a move, you correct me if I'm wrong, Phyllis, I think we're seeing a move among cities to go to larger, to larger spaces because we are seeing larger vehicles on the road. So I think Wiley, for example, is a ten-by-twenty is their minimum size.
A lot of cities are twenty feet in length, uh, and some are going to wider, uh, but usually nine-by-twenty is, is the typical space size.
And I think about SUVs and the bigger vehicles and the number of, of trucks and stuff that we're, that we see around here, I think that's the reason, reason for it. Um, I mean, you go and park in a parking space in a shopping area, and if you're in an SUV and there's a truck or another SUV next to you, it's like squeezing through the mirrors, that kind of thing, so...
Well, and the doleys, the doleys do not fit in even a standard, uh, there is...
With end lengths.
Well, they, technically they do, because they're within the guidelines of, of, of the traffic laws and stuff, so...
Traffic lanes, but I'm not sure...
You know, there, it's just, I mean, I think, well, we have to decide, and this is something we don't decide today, we'll decide this later on down the line, if there's a problem with our parking space sizes, then we, then we can, we can make a move and take it to council to increase the size of those spaces, um, but we need to really think long and hard about two of them.
And that's a different, different topic, different conversation, right?
Another day for that.
But it's a good thought.
Along with the QT thing.
It is, it's a good thought.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it's a, that's a side development e- element, yeah, it's just not, it's not a landscape element.
Yep.
Um, but bringing that up, the trees that we have to plant, so where I've got a tree in the middle of a parking row and then I've got one on each end, kind of thing, what's the minimum width that aisle gonna be to plant a tree, ten feet?
Ten feet. Ten by eighteen would be the minimum island size, uh, very similar to a parking space.
Yeah.
But you really need...
Well, sometimes I try to do that, I'll try to just take one parking space out and make it a place for the tree, but that makes it nine foot, so...
You really need ten feet, uh, for trees, you know, to plant, plant in the middle, that gives them room to, to grow and thrive. You, you've all seen pitiful-looking trees in parking lots that are in this little diamond of dirt, and, you know, they sit there for fifteen years and never grow, so I think we want the trees to have enough room to thrive.
I do like the idea of being able to cluster the trees, uh, in, in locations and whatever, because one thing that bothers me is driving down a road and I can't see what I'm trying to find because there's trees in the way. I can't see the signage on the buildings, I can't see the dresses on the buildings, you know? Our signage has got to the point now where everything's a monument sign, pretty much, so, you know, your GPS tells you how to get there, but then it can't find it for the trees. So I'm glad to see we're spreading those things out where we can actually visually see the buildings and what's, what's building.
I think that's just a practical thing, too, because you're, you're gonna have electric boxes and all sorts of stuff out in that strip, there are conflicts.
Right, I agree. Okay, um, we don't take any action on this today, this is just an update, so we'll be back here on the twelfth to discuss all elements in detail. So if you've got questions or concerns about anything that's been said today, get in tou- get in touch with Mary or Diane and discuss it, and then, uh, we will, we can look at this on the twelfth of September in more detail and, uh, go through the items that we're gonna... And then we will, we can look at this on the twelfth of September in more detail and go through the items that we're gonna change one by one and discuss those. It's gonna probably take a little more time in that meeting, so be prepared for that. But this is an important element in our development, you know, as far as the future of development, so we really need to carefully look at this ordinance. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you, Phyllis.
As usual, job well done. I didn't used to say that about her, I have to say that when she was at Plankton, man, she was, she was hard on us. She was hard on us. Anything else this morning? Okay, seeing nothing, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Have a motion?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at ten forty-nine AM.